All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order. This is, well, it says city council meeting, but it's technically a study session. So I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager to lead us off on this concurrency adventure.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. I thought about invoking a little Texas history tonight because in the Battle of San Jacinto, Sam Houston actually ordered a bridge blown up so that he could make sure there was no retreat. So I was thinking about locking the doors and keeping you all in here. But we, well, we didn't order enough, that's why. So we're gonna have to. I did want to walk you through a few things, and you have at your place this evening some documents I think you'll find somewhat interesting. The long sheet you have is a listing of all the meetings going back to the first of January in 2017, and indicating all the meetings you've had in regards to this particular issue. It outlines the topics, the purpose of the presentation, any decisions requested, some of the input and decisions made, and some of the supplemental documents. You also have this manual, which is, everything has been put together in regards to what you've requested on concurrency. It has communications and everything else in there. So it's, I think it's a good indication that you've tackled this issue from every direction possible. And I'm not sure there's any stone that's been left uncovered. You also have your decision tree that we gave you last time, and I just want to review some of the decisions that you've made in regards to this issue. First, you asked that whatever we do is that we simplify the methodology. Now, I want you to keep that in mind as I walk through the rest of this. You wanted to capture driver experience. You wanted to identify failures. You wanted intersections only average across all legs with a C at minor arterials and collectors, a D at arterials, and E if you can't meet D at all legs. You wanted to measure AM and PM peak directions. And you also agreed on the HCM model. So the things that you still have to decide is segments and corridors, and you also have to decide on your V over C, which you have voted down a .25 and a .15, both of those with a 25 percent failure. And let me also touch base on the HCM model for just a moment. HCM model is a fairly simplified model, but it does have some limitations to it. Because the only way that you solve the problems with failure in that model is you either have to build more lanes and/or increase speeds. I think it's a good model.
Speeds, yeah.
I think it's a good model if you're trying to focus on what your priorities are, but if you're using it for a hard and fast rule, the fix is awfully expensive, and the destruction of that fix is pretty high. And I just wanted to give you a quick example of what that looks like, and I'm gonna turn to Steve just to show you an improvement that's been made recently and how that has influenced the flow of traffic. Thing you have to keep in mind is, no matter what model you pick, there's a lot of fluidity in what happens in traffic with just a little bit of tweaking here and there. So, Steve?
Is there a question? Well?
How the HCM methodology is kind of like a really big giant backhoe to plant your tulip sometimes.
Again, the fix with the HCM models is only two ways to do that. You either have to create more lanes, and that usually means you're gonna be widening streets, and with everything you have to do in a right-of-way, which usually in this town, you're gonna be taking down some trees, and/or you have to increase speeds. And increasing speeds through town is kind of an interesting one to me. Maybe our professionals could kind of indicate different, because if we get them to either end of town really fast, we're just gonna stack them up quicker, because that's where our bottlenecks are at.
Hold on, I think we got another question. Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, I know we have an advocate here with our city manager for the Florida model, but do we have somebody who can give us the, perhaps the pros for the, using the agency? Because I am not a pro for the...
I think I can.
Thank you.
If you...
Before you do that, Councilor Hornish, let me indicate too that I'm not advocating for one or the other. What I've indicated with the HCM model, it is good if you're looking at that to identify priorities. But if you're trying to make it a hard and fast, that's my only concern that you may have there. But again, wherever you want to go, I have no ax on this. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, and actually, I think it's a fair point, and it sure seems that way, but if you go back to our meeting on the 16th and on that spreadsheet, 228th Avenue Central Corridor, line 17 and 18, I guess, if you look at it. And here you have all of the pluses that FDOT gives you credit for. You've got the 4, 1, 1, four lanes, left turn lane, and a median. The capacity for the FDOT is 1,700, and the capacity for the HCM is 1,772. So there really isn't a whole lot different. Once you get all these extra things that FDOT gives you credit for, and then you're gonna have to add a lane anyhow under FDOT or HCM. I like the HCM better because it has a higher number to begin with. It might be a little blunter, but it's simpler, and I think that's why we voted to adopt the HCM to begin with.
I have one quick question, though, because you mentioned speeds. I recall, and this is some time ago, Victor, I thought you said the ideal speed is 35 miles an hour. Is that right? I mean, so for some of our roads, like East Lakes Mammoth Parkway, for example, which is 35 miles an hour, increasing the speed limit down there isn't necessarily gonna equate to more capacity, is it?
Some of the HCM level of service standards are more qualitative, speed being one. So, for instance, HCM, one of their previous standards was running speed is close to speed limit. So if the speed limit's 45, and you can drive 45 regardless of the volume, that's a good level of service. Doesn't even have a volume, the volume's used to calculate the speed. So, but I have a speed flow graph here, because I was trying to answer the question from last week about how can you have the same, a high volume going slow and a high volume going fast. So this curve, believe it or not, was generated by a forward-thinking traffic engineer in 1935 and will still using it. Cars couldn't even go 70 yet, and he figured out, based on the density of vehicles on a roadway, so basically how far apart they are in a given mile and how fast they're going, you could have 1,200 vehicles an hour going 70 miles an hour, but also when you get to what's called unstable flow, which is how I characterized East Lakes Mammoth Parkway, you can also have 1,200 vehicles an hour in unstable flow, where they're bunched together very close together versus spaced apart going 70. But the Highway Capacity Manual says, when that 1,200's going 70, that's LOSA. When that 1,200 is going 10, that's LOSF. That's capacity. So there, you gotta watch, when you're reading the HCM, when it's talking about a qualitative level of service, and when it's talking about a quantitative number. It kind of interchanges both of them, or it'll backcalculate one from the other. So it'll say, if our objective is 25 mile an hour free-flowing speed, then we would have X capacity. And I think that's where the 800 in the chart for East Lakes Mammoth Parkway, that's sort of the explanation of how is the capacity lower than we counted? Because from a qualitative perspective, if I wanted to drive home at 35 miles an hour every night when I'm going 10, you know, I would, you would have to have more capacity on the road for me to go 35. But the road can get the same number of trips through at 10 to 15 during that period.
Well, I don't want to shake us off to the side too much, because I think we kind of cut you off at the knees there, so...
That's okay. And this is what the purpose of this meeting is, so you can work through all these issues. But I was gonna turn to Steve and let him walk you through an example of just a recent improvement here.
The mouse doesn't work over there.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, just, Victor, per our conversation right before the meeting, sorry. No, you can't have them before...
I was gonna have some salad, I didn't have my greens yet.
I'll get you veggies in a minute.
Honest, I wasn't getting pizza.
Per our conversation earlier, though, I think one of the points you made was that, that while numbers do show that when you space the cars closer together, you can squeeze some more through, that the 881 that we're using in various segments around the city, like Issaquah Pine Lake Road, for example, is probably not accurate and does not explain the difference between the measured volumes and the calculated capacity. That there is no math that can prove out that we can have a 45 percent more volume on the road if we go 10 miles an hour and we're 10 feet apart, versus if we're going 30 miles an hour, we'd have to be 110 feet apart in order to achieve that ratio of measured capacity to actual volume. So that, that means that the 881 calculated capacity is not accurate. That, that capacity, I think you said, should be closer to something like 1,200.
Right. And because that capacity is, the table that you are using has generalized assumptions for every road segment, so the same intersection spacing, the same number of interfering traffic that's going across, the same roughly 50/50 distribution northbound and southbound, which we all know East Lakes Mammoth Parkway is 80/20 one way in the morning and 80/20 the other way.
Well, again, I don't want to talk about East Lakes Mammoth Parkway. I'd like to talk about Issaquah Pine Lake Road, which has a similar...
Yeah, similar. And it's also, I think it's the reason why the analysis actually begins to converge on 228th, and the capacity is about the same, because 228th is a good example of what the Highway Capacity Manual's trying to figure out for an arterial level of service. It's behaving like that. It's got lots of intersections. It's got high volumes of cross-traffic at all the intersections. So that's why you're seeing the two methodologies actually pretty close. And as you start generalizing more between them, and when the road becomes less like 228th with fewer intersections and more like a highway, then those, that 880 really isn't representative of that particular stretch, several stretches. Anything that looks more like a highway with intersections spaced a mile apart is, has obviously a higher capacity, because you counted more cars than the capacity. But that's, that's, that's why. There are several adjustments that are going into that number.
So that's where the blunt instrument becomes a bit of a challenge.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As we were looking, we haven't gotten to the forecast, right? So as we started to look at the 2024 number for Issaquah Pine Lake Road, which I think we had last time, right? This is one of these dynamic events that has nothing to do with a road project or a city project, but as far as capacity moving around, I don't have the mouse, but everybody understands where we are. Issaquah Pine Lake Road is on the diagonal part of the screen, and 228th is the vertical, and that is Issaquah Pine Lake Middle School. So what we have seen in the 2024 in this area is a shift of trips from one roadway to the other. And where we are, you know, again, out of our control, the school district came in, right, and they're rerouting their site. They now have four lanes longer of stacking potential inside than they previously had. So people are flipping their access into and diverting trips from one leg, which would be Issaquah Pine, over to 228. I don't know if I need a point anymore. It's, it's a very simple topic and a very simple application. It's a perfect site where we didn't do anything here, right, other than encourage the development, i.e. the school district, to provide space internally, because we knew we had issues just operationally out on the main roads. So the point being, we have increased capacity on Issaquah Pine Lake by somebody else doing something that had nothing to do with our roadway improvements. So just, everything is always fluid and dynamic, and car flow is much like water flow. It kind of goes where it goes. And I go back two and a half years ago when I first walked in here, and you know, Victor was talking about, you know, you widen here, it takes from there, it's all dynamic. They all, all the same amount of cars end up in the same place at some point. So just how do they get to where they're going? This was an example of that. I don't know if there's anything else I'd touch on. It was a little simple site that made sense to share.
Traffic on Issaquah Pine Lake Road, then? The congestion there cleared? Or is lessened?
Model-wise, we have, anecdotally, we have had less calls. It seems to be operating fairly efficiently.
Near the school?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So that was, this model work. And a model is a predictive tool. It's doing its best. It's not a fact-finder either, but it's the best we have to predict.
This is an interest, it's interesting that you selected this, because I have a question. As we go through and looking at the methodologies and the V over C ratios that are presented on that table that we had last week, there's only one segment that I could find that is over 1.0 in terms of a Highway Capacity Manual VC ratio that is not on our tip, right? So Issaquah Falls City Road, Issaquah Pine Lake Road, all have VC ratios over 1. It's that leg right there, 228th, Issaquah Pine Lake Road, 43rd. It's over 1.0. It's the only one that's not an identified tip project already. But because we're using 2016 traffic counts, and this is new, I'm curious if that's still relevant. I mean, we have to deal with what we have in front of us, which is 2016 numbers, and we have a VC ratio of over 1.0 there.
So with the HCM table or the FDOT?
HCM.
HCM, correct me if I'm wrong, is .91?
Maybe.
In the, what is that, PM?
I'm gonna find it.
FDOT was over 1.
Maybe I looked at FDOT. I was looking at it on my phone.
Yeah. So right now, if you're gonna take the HCM approach, there is some capacity is probably still eligible for cap, no, TIF dollars.
I don't know.
Issaquah Pine.
I've got it on my phone. So I'll have to look at that picture.
We add to the leg, intersection, and then the site, which would be 32nd.
Oh, no, I was trying to look it out on my phone, which it looks like that.
So overall, it had a 1.082.
No, HCM, it's over 1. Well, not for a segment, but so I'm, so not, not for that corridor, not for the south corridor.
Right.
I was looking specifically at one of them. So there's only, so one of them's 1, at 1.2 for FDOT, but under HCM, it's like that way. 1.08. Again, but it's just for a segment, and it's just, it's right there. That's why I'm curious if that change that they've made it.
Yeah.
So I'm not looking at that. I'm, it's not Issaquah Pine Lake Road.
Oh.
It's 228. 228, Issaquah Pine Lake Road, Southeast 23rd. So this is line...
You were on the right side.
19. 19 and 20 is that 228th Avenue South Corridor. 228.
Yeah, Project 20.
It's the segment, not the corridor.
Sure, Project 20, right.
But it's right there.
Yeah.
And so I'm curious if that improvement from the school has had an impact there where the VC ratio would drop under 1.
We wouldn't know until we have the counts, right?
Right, but...
And that's, it is very fluid. There's lots of things that are changing, and operationally too, ITS and everything else that we don't have on certain corridors, which we can add in the future. I expect we would add to Issaquah Falls City Road. It's not programmed right now, but makes sense, right? So all those things will change things. That we can guarantee.
Moving on.
And with that, really did not bring other things.
We can just kind of hash it out amongst ourselves.
Yep, unless you hash it out. We've blown up the bridge, so...
I don't know, it's open. Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, before we get into, one of the things that I'm concerned about that we're gonna be hashing out is trying to come up with some number or ratio here to put in as part of this exercise. When there's two parts of one, we're supposed to be looking at 2035 data, and the second part is, is each one of us is kind of winging it. We're not transportation engineers, and that's what staff is. So personally, I would like to get a staff recommendation, given your experiences, on what is a number of bases that could make some sense, rather than us winging it here, and what was the justification, so that we can then internalize that from a professional background, instead of how we feel things should be going.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll, I'd be happy to start on answering that question a little bit. So in many communities, we've approached this in a variety of ways, and you've brought up the idea, I've heard it from a few folks here, you know, it'd be great to look at the 2035 data and to know, well, what is the VC gonna be in 2035? I've worked with communities, the city of Kirkland is one, for example. They did modeling, they knew the amount of growth that they had anticipated by 2035, and they set their volume to capacity or their intersection level of service, allowable congestion, based on just what would happen on the 2035 system with a list of projects. And they let the VCs go everywhere. So some of the VCs that they allowed were very, very high. And in other quarters where congestion wasn't accepted or wasn't expected, then they had much lower VCs. So that is to say that we could certainly work and come up with a modeling exercise in 2035 what it's gonna look like with your current project list. What I would say is that the VCs that we'll set would, are still gonna be a policy decision for the council. You can go anywhere from what we expect. You can allow even more. If you're a community like Seattle, they set their VCs so high that you could never reach them. And of course, we could set something that's maybe more familiar, could be based on the levels of congestion we have today, could be something based on a, you know, VC of 1, or something that you, that you feel is more palatable. But again, what I would say is that at the end of the day, whatever threshold we set, and this is the way that state law also, or state, the state also guides communities, it is a policy decision in terms of the level of congestion that's acceptable from a community-to-community standpoint. My professional recommendation, and I brought it up at the last meeting, so I don't want to beat a dead horse, is that as you were thinking about your capital list, I think that a recognition of congestion is one very important aspect, but I don't think it's the only important aspect. And so setting VCs can feel a bit arbitrary if we're doing that in a vacuum, not thinking about things like pedestrian connectivity, safety, cost. So my recommendation has been to use, we've got intersection level of service that's now in your concurrency program. My recommendation is to use that, at least for the meantime. Go forward with your transportation master plan, figure out that full list of projects that make sense for this community, and then revisit the concurrency discussion after you have that list of projects. I will say there are other models of concurrency out there that may make a lot of sense for some mammoth. City of Redmond, city of Kenmore, the city of Kirkland, all have concurrency programs that are based on system completeness and moving towards their, building their ultimate system. The way that Kenmore structured its program is they actually did recognize a level of congestion that was acceptable to them. Redmond also did this. They recognized travel times that were important to them, and those were, those are being used for prioritization. But again, they've, they've restructured their concurrency program to work towards completion of the system they want to build. So again, it's, it's a little different. It doesn't mean that, that staff, as they're planning and prioritizing their capital improvements, are putting their blinders on to volume to capacity, but again, they, they haven't tied that into the development review program to the level that we're contemplating here.
Yeah, thank you. Just so everyone knows, I do have to leave early tonight. Everyone is at my house having an 18th birthday party without me. So I went ahead and put my thoughts down on paper in case we, this discussion went well into the night. So we talked about it briefly already, and I just want to cover it. So my concern with both methodologies here is that the calculated capacities seem severely understated. And I think Councilmember Hornish has said two things that I want to reiterate. One is that we have to get this right, and especially if we're talking about developing a tool and developing it as a test that says, once we fail the test, we have to go make, take corrective action. Again, I think we, we all know where the corrective action is needed in the city right now, and we have a tip that we, we have projects on. I think if we're going to implement another tool on top of that, that is going to then require us by law to take action, we need to be certain that our calculations are accurate. So just to reiterate, those calculated capacities, we have proven them to be wrong based on the measured volumes. And that, I have some charts, I'm happy to share. I did some calculations that said, all else being equal, if you only change speed and the distance between the cars, you would have to take a car traveling 10 miles an hour, you would have to have 10 feet between those cars, but cars traveling 30 miles an hour would have to have 110 feet between them to be able to get those ratios of volume, actual measured volume, to the calculated capacity. And I just don't believe that our situation on the road is that drastic, that our traffic on Issaquah Pine Lake Road, which was the, the segment that I used as an example, right, where they have a calculated capacity of 881 according to the Highway Capacity Model, or 660 based on FDOT, where the measured capacity was 1,263. So I just, I just don't believe it. And if, if you assume that the distance between the cars is 20 feet when they're going 10 miles an hour, you would have to have the cars 160 feet apart at 30 miles an hour. That's nine car lengths. People do not drive around here with nine car lengths between them when there's traffic. At, you know, in, in the first example, it would be six car lengths. So if we're going to implement a V over C calculation as a tool that is, that is gonna be used in some precise measurement that says, the next car, right, we're gonna use it that says, when someone comes in and says, I want to add another house, and we say that next car is going to fail the capacity here, and some, some mitigation needs to be taken, and in the Highway Capacity Model, that would have to be adding another lane. I just think we have to be more accurate. We have to get this right. And I think that, you know, environmentally, adding another lane when it's not needed, and again, I'm not saying that there aren't places where we need more lanes, but to add a lane, a lane where it's not needed, we're gonna take down hundreds of trees. We're gonna add miles of impervious surface. We're gonna do, we're gonna devastate the environment. We're gonna take people's land so that we can build a road, and we're gonna charge our taxpayers tens, maybe even hundreds of millions of dollars to do it. That's completely irresponsible. So I think, and I'm happy to share this with anyone who would like it, I think that we need to follow the recommendation of our staff and our interim city manager. We brought him in here to help us with this, that these calculations are fine calculations to show us where things are changing, to show us where we need to focus, to help us prioritize as an additional check on our intersection level of service. But I just, I can't imagine us using it for something more precise, and I'll, I'll actually direct this to Councilmember Hornish and Councilmember Valderrama. You cannot use a, an imprecise measurement to do a precise calculation, right? We're trying to take an imprecise tool and apply it in a very precise way, and that is just, that is just a violation of everything you learn in engineering school. So I have a proposal here that we select a V over C calculation for now as a monitoring, a monitoring tool. We resume work immediately on the transportation master plan. And then the information that's gathered as that work to inform us on things like new or changes to roads, road improvements, transit, non-motorized options, and performance measures, including concurrency, but not just concurrency. Fund twice yearly traffic counts and run them through our performance measurements, not necessarily updating the model, but run them through our performance measurements, and get a briefing from staff twice, at least twice a year. Ask staff if there are any other more frequent updates we can receive to monitor the situation, and at the completion of the TMP, we reevaluate how we measure concurrency and make any necessary adjustments. And then on top of that, I just want to say that we need a managed growth plan. We should create a plan to manage our growth in the city. To this point, we've spent more than a year debating how best to measure traffic and no time on how best to measure or to manage the growth and the transportation for the city. I think all development greater than single-family homes should be subject to this concurrency qualification. We need to expand the TDR program to encompass the entire city, not just the basins and wetlands specified today. We need to prioritize transit planning and funding. We need to accelerate the work on a housing strategy, and we need to work with city staff, the planning commission, and the council to prioritize other best practices for managing growth and transportation in and around our city. That, that's what we need. We need a vision, we need a plan. We need a vision, we need a plan, and I think that we have beaten the horse beyond death on concurrency. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. I'm kind of blown away. I, I agree with everything you said. So, two things. One, I agree with everything Kendra said as well. I don't think we need a V over C that's going to be part of our model unless it's going to be accurate. And I don't know that we have that yet. We're divided over this, I mean, I go back to the process, right? The process map, we were trying to figure out our decision matrix, right? And I thought we'd already decided that we were going to move forward on, for our decisions tonight, we'd already decided on HCM over FDOT, and what we were left with was a choice between segments and corridors. That was option one, or choice one we had to make. And choice two was, we had to decide essentially, are we, that number, essentially, the V over C numbers, the plugins, right, that we were going to use. So, in the interest of time, I think it's appropriate that we at least try to figure out if there is a majority on those two issues and stay focused on that. I mean, I can sit here uncomfortably say that I agree with what Councilmember Stewart said, and I agree with what Kendra said. I don't think this is necessary. Having said that, I want to try to move us forward, and I'd like to see us get to the point where we're, I'm amenable to compromise, whatever that is, but we need to try to move forward here at some point and not just have it be a hard no. There needs to be movement on all sides here to try to figure out what that's going to be. But if we, I guess we need to figure out, are we, are we wedded to our decisions from our previous meetings, HCM only, not FDOT, not a blend potentially? And are we wedded to just, you know, figuring out that ratio? Or do we need to take a step back and look at all these other numbers? And if we do, if we're not there, if we're not settled on those things, and I don't know that we are at this point, I'm not sure where we go from here. I'm not sure how we get to a point where we're actually making forward progress, we keep kind of rolling this around. And I'll just close by saying, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I don't know any of us that are, except for the folks that we've hired to come in and that work for staff. So, I'm, I, this has been a pretty steep learning curve for me to try to figure out what is best. But I do agree with what Councilmember Stewart said, that, you know, we do have some factual data we can get, and then we have this HCM/FDOT thing, which is really kind of not designed for what we have here. Some streets it is, but not all the streets, right? So, what I go back to is what we, I thought we were trying to do, which is, let's put a concurrency model in place, let's plug it in, let's, let's get it going, let's go back and do our, essentially, our regular course of business, the TMP and the budget and everything else we've got in front of us. And then, after the TMP, we look at this again, and I think that, I still think that makes a lot of sense. But again, having said all that, are we going to spend the night here arguing over things we've already discussed? I mean, is it germane to talk about FDOT and blends, or are we just here to take care of these two questions in front of us? I don't know.
So, I will say, just to answer some of your questions, the council by vote moved HCM forward, so we're not discussing FDOT. It's on that chart because it was on the chart last week, but the council by vote moved forward with HCM. So, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, the council took action to move forward with highway capacity, highway capacity manual for a V over C. What we did not decide on was the V over C ratio and the segment versus corridor thing, which is what I think we're trying to hash out tonight, so.
And that is correct. And nothing in my introduction was arguing that you should change your decision, other than how you may want to use that model is the only issue that we want to talk about. But you've made that decision, and again, one of the things we want you to do is continue to move along. You do have to add those other two elements that we chatted about there, V over C, you got to make a decision on that.
Can I just clarify? Just to clarify that, then we do have a third decision to make then, right? I mean, we have to decide whether or not we're actually going to, so we decide HCM, we decide corridors, we decide 1.14, I don't, whatever, whatever number we pick. We come to some answers, we can't tonight because we can't vote in study session, right? But we put together a motion that has essentially three components or one, but it would seem to me the third component is, is this advisory or is it actually a vested part of our concurrency modeling? Is that, we haven't decided.
Kristi, I think we've already decided that. Okay, we've already decided.
We did. What we, what we decided last week was highway capacity manual.
I know.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, and, and we adopted to any prior to that, that we would have a V over C.
I understand. Hold on just a second. Hold on just a second.
Let's clarify, I want to know that if we, if we have decided that, can I, I appreciate that that's your perception. Can I get some clarification from staff? Has anybody from a notes or minutes section, have we decided that section of this? We can argue months ourselves what we have and haven't decided, but I don't know. So, I would rather we didn't argue months ourselves and ask staff to review the minutes. What did we decide as far as whether or not this V over C modeling was going to be, or this V over C calculation, whatever we want to call it, was going to be either a functioning required component of our concurrency model, or did we decide that it was not yet? Have we decided that yet? And if we have, we have, I don't know, I'm asking.
I'm going to have staff answer. Because it may differ from what some of the others of us think. Let's see. Let's see what, let's see what staff's answer is here.
We're checking the chart here.
My understanding is that we moved forward with the V over C ratio, that we wanted to add that. That was on the same night that the moratorium was lifted and the comp plan adjustments were made.
Best I recall, and I think we'll have this here in just a second, is that you did decide on that aspect. You just needed to define it.
Yes, okay. I have Councilmember Hornish next.
Well, I think you just answered my question. I think we're going backwards. We just wasted 40 minutes to talk about the TMP and whether or not we should even be adopting V over C. It's been decided. We, we said we wanted, when we said we would put it on the interim development regs, we would adopt a V over C to be part of concurrency. And then we had to figure out what that V over C would be as part of concurrency. And tonight, I think, city manager highlighted it, all we need to talk about, do we want to consider doing corridors, and what is the V over C? There's only two questions to discuss tonight.
I would agree that that's where council left things off from last week and previous decisions. Okay, okay.
So, on July 10th, the council did pass a motion not to approve any amendments at the time to the comp plan and to add a capacity table into the comp, into the comp plan, and the capacity table is the segment and/or corridor. That's what it was referring to.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so on September 11th, the motion was to adopt intersections only and that the council will determine the V over C scope and methodology by 1016. So, that V over C scope was, right, but on the, on the 16th, you did decide.
We did, scope and methodology.
Principal and minors, minor arterials, and.
I'm sorry, what was the date again?
On Sep.
9/11.
On 9/11, right. So, on the 16th, you did do those two things. You decided HCM and that it would be principal and minor arterials.
Which that, that covered scope and methodology, which was what the motion was, is my understanding.
I just, I wasn't trying to disrupt things.
Okay, hold on.
I just want to clarify, if I can.
I just want to make sure we're going in order here.
My flex still up, so I'm just.
Well, I know, but Councilmember Hornish had the floor, I just want to make sure he's done. Are you done, Tom?
I, I am finished, yes.
Okay, okay. So, technically, I need to go back in order of these unless everyone wants to cede their time. Karen, Romero? Romero?
Who are we seeing?
Jason, you would be next, Jason would like to speak again.
Oh, all right, Jason, go ahead.
Karen? Okay, go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, I appreciate this. I just want to agree with what Councilmember Hornish said, and I think we're saying the same thing here, which is, I don't think on September, the September meeting, whenever it was, I don't think by that October 16th deadline, we were saying that we have to do soup to nuts, out the door, V over C had to be done or it gets canceled. I think we made some decision in that September meeting that set the V over C going. And I go back to the July meeting, again, what Councilmember Hornish said, we're here to make two decisions, not three, and I appreciate Cheryl clarifying it. I would just ask, going forward here, that we, if we're going to do this, if we're going to try to get out of here to reasonable hour and a special session and all these things, that we really try to stay focused on either corridors or segments and what the ratio is going to be, and that's it.
I would agree.
And we can go forward on any number of conversations elsewhere, another offline, whatever we want to do. But right now, we have two decisions to make, we've been here for 50 minutes, and I would hope that we can stay focused on those two things. Otherwise, we're not following the process that we set out. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Valderrama.
Oh, no, Maran's before I am, she had hers.
Oh, you did? Okay, sorry, Karen.
Do I have to get rid of all the extra complaints?
Yes, stay focused on corridors and segments. And VC ratio.
All right. Okay, so, well, that gets rid of that one, never mind. I could throw that one.
You can, I think you can, if you have some questions, I don't.
Oh, well, one of the things is, I do want to hear from our traffic engineer over here because I do respect what you, everything that, we have, we have a traffic engineer here to this evening, and I'd like to hear what you have to say about it.
So, the, trying to figure out how best to do this. Kendra kind of mentioned a sort of a planning-focused system completion level of service, which a lot of jurisdictions are moving towards, in which you kind of define the system you want. We would essentially kind of reverse the capacities of that system, and you would measure the capacity of that system against the volumes you're applying to it. And you might have a V over C of three on one of them and 0.5 on another because it's what you determined you wanted. If you wanted a bicycle boulevard, for instance, maybe you didn't have any cars on it. If you stick with HCM, a strict interpretation, so we've gone from ADT to total peak hour to directional peak hour, so a pretty fine gate to go through now, the challenge is, that system will then direct mitigation or direct very clearly whether something passes or fails your concurrency test by a very potentially small number in a very, you know, in one direction. So, from a policy perspective, would you want to, how much do you want to regulate or manage growth because one direction of one road fails its level of service standard for one hour of the day? That's, so, so HCM is going to kind of guide your TMP or say, you know, you need to add a lane here. That, that's the solution because adding a turn pocket, you know, gets you 5%, and adding a lane gets you 1,000 cars an hour, or 880, depending on which situation we're looking at. So, the caution with picking a V over C ratio, or not caution, the reality is if you do a strictly engineering-based one, it will drive improvements in big chunks or it'll drive yes or no decisions in big chunks. So, if you want to give yourself time to let the TMP drive a more sort of holistic transportation system, then I would lean towards a higher V over C ratio that would allow you to not use segments necessarily to throttle things, but to, again, inform you that, okay, at a V over C of 1.5, we probably want to do something, but we don't want the V over C ratio to tell us what it is. We want some other stuff to tell us what that improvement is. But at least it triggers it. So, it's like, we will have a CIP project, but maybe not necessarily the one that HCM says, well, you need two full lanes each direction. Or when you have a directional one, would you build a, you know, an unbalanced roadway, which happens sometimes. You, you might build a three-lane road where Saholi Way is two lanes going up the hill and one lane going down until you get to a hopefully big intersection at 202 that works better than what you have now. So, it's really, it's a spectrum of a calculation that tells you sort of exactly what to do and where to do it. Add one more lane here, add a two-way left turn lane from point A to point B versus a system that would more say, here's everything we want all together and we'll tolerate congestion there, but not here. That, I think, is your challenge. So, again, if you're picking a V over C ratio, there's nothing wrong with having alternative V over C ratios. And even if we don't like the HCM numbers, those capacities, at least they're, they're kind of consistent, so where you believe the capacity is unrealistic and too low, you know, pick a V over C ratio of two for that segment because we can figure out in our heads why we don't believe the 800 and we counted 1,200. So, maybe the capacity is, you know, 1320, we're going to have 10% more traffic on that link before we cry foul. So, that's what I would have you think about is, is where those V over Cs, let them guide some of that, you know, kind of sensitivity, is where, we all know, or I think you know, where you, where you want improvements. We kind of talked about that several times. The north end on Saholi Way, the south end on Issaquapine Lake. Now, it is, it is telling you maybe southbound on 228th, past Issaquapine Lake, you know, that probably could use some more lanes, there's a lot of activity going on there. I think that's why this flagged it, is this methodology is recognizing the cross-traffic and activity that's happening south of there. So, so I would suggest you look at, you know, a variable, V over C ratio, depend, you know, kind of matching where you expect to see improvements in the future, but give yourself enough slack so that it doesn't drive an improvement you don't want. That, you know, have, have, have a mechanism that says, well, we, we really don't want 228th to be seven lanes wide just because it went 5% over its capacity in one direction for an hour. That's probably not a reason to spend $100 million.
Can you say that again?
How, which part of it?
I think you all heard it.
The 228th, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, don't, you know, if you, if you pick, you know, don't pick a V over C necessarily that says you're going to make Saholi, or 228th, seven lanes wide because it's 5% over its estimated capacity for one hour in one direction of the day. You know, that's, that's a, that's a pretty blunt tool to spend $100 million. And you probably, so that's, I think, give yourself some leeway. So, I think what, what I'm not certain of is whether it's the 15% or the 25%, because, you know, me being the Mr. Engineer, I do want to see the, the model run with all the land use anticipated for 2035 so we can, we can go, okay, 228th is predicted to be 1.25 in 2035, so let's make that our standard. Let's agree what it's going to be and manage our way up to there versus if we pick 1.15, and then, you know, you'll probably get five or 10 years of development, and then it'll hit it, and then, you know, I wouldn't want you to be surprised and go, what happened? We thought we planned for this, and now we're over capacity again. Or I wouldn't want you to pick 105, and then the first concurrency certificate for a project you actually want comes in and 228th fails, and now we go, oh, well, we have a problem now. So, that's, that's the challenge, is without kind of knowing the implication of your standard against growth you want, you, you might have a project out there that you didn't realize. The other side of it is make sure you get the projects you want. So, you know, pick a V over C ratio close to what's now, what you now have in areas where you know you want a capital project.
Okay, then the other question I had was also one that I brought up at the last meeting, which was, isn't there some way that we can kind of have our own hybrid of mixing the highway capacity manual with some of the good things? Because some of the problem I have with the Florida is that some of it's way too simple. I mean, they've got flatlands that you could have eight lanes. We don't have that. So, and some of it's just way too complicated. So, isn't there a way that we could take some of the things from the Florida manual that are actually quite good and take some of the things from the highway capacity manual and kind of make a hybrid?
Well, the, so the Florida manual is the highway capacity manual with adjustments of FDOT made to it.
With the ADTs.
I mean, they, they adjusted several things. They, they didn't like, in the speed, kind of qualitative LOS, they didn't like percent of free running speed, they wanted percent of speed limit. I mean, they, that's why they're a little lower, is they, they turn a couple dials a little more. But it is, in fact, the HCM methodology tweaked for Florida. It's not this whole standalone thing.
Right.
By itself, it just has some different adjustment factors. There are, the table you have now is, like, it's generalized, so it has a K factor, which is the proportion of peak hour traffic to daily traffic. That's assumed to be the same for every road in the city. Well, it's not. And you have 24-hour counts, you could actually refine it and figure out what it is, what the K factor is for every road. It has a D factor, that's the amount of traffic going each direction, and right now, it's in the 55.55, which means 55% one way, 45% the other. Well, some roads are 60/40, others are 70/30, some are 50/50. So, you could refine it. I think you will get a slightly more accurate calculation that way, but I think as Councilmember Stewart mentioned, it's, it's, you'll often get a more precise calculation than you do accurate. So, all of our mathematical things are extremely precise, that does not de facto make them accurate at all. But at least we can repeat it and do, we can make the same mistake every single time. So, we can adjust, that's called adjustment. So, so if we.
We're going to pick better, more flexible design standards.
Yeah. So, so HCM, you know, it's a book this thick, so you can say we're going to do HCM, and this is one version of it, but there are 100 others. But this is a fairly simple version. It is one reason why a lot of folks go, a lot of agencies will, if they're doing segments, will go to ADT because that squashes out this directional stuff and the K factor. You just count one number, and you just agree that, all right, our two-lane roads can have 22,000 ADT, that's our number, or that's. 22,000 ADT, that's our number, or that's the capacity, and we're going to have a V over C of 1.1 over there and 0.8 over there.
But that's what I notice about Florida, is, is, once you start all their worksheets, they all start with the ADT.
Yeah, these are all refinements to try to get to that, do we want a tool that tells us how many lanes we need, or do we want a tool maybe that tells us sort of the character of the road?
All right, then, the last question was, oh, it was on the, on the VISM, but having to do with the, the package of the VISM, putting it together in the TMP, but I guess that's a different discussion.
That's a different thing.
Councilmember Valdrama.
A lot of food for thought. The first one is, and it goes back to the point that Councilmember Ritchie raised, we did say we were going to be done by October 16th. So, we're here, obviously, we're still not done, we're still having discussions going back and forth, talking about the Florida Department of Transportation model, and we're still going back and forth, talking about simplifying, that we want it supported by documentation, that we want a hybrid, that we can with our own measures. And so, I just keep hearing, every time we go cross purposes of what we've been saying from the very beginning. We also, as I look back on this, said that we were going to put it into comprehensive plan, but I don't see a date. And from what I'm hearing Victor and Kendra and staff saying, and it makes a lot of sense to me, is stick with the level of services of intersection initially, use this as an analysis tool, that we can look at hotspots, prioritization, to be able to look at what's taking place. Is that correct, or am I mischaracterizing?
Well, that was my recommendation, although I'm listening to the council.
I understand, I'm just talking about what staff's saying.
You guys are going a different way.
That's correct. I just want to make sure I have the staff recommendations that are coming in. More importantly, what I've, I've mentioned before, and they've told us, when we do the TMP analysis, there's going to be recommendations for changes in our roads and that, and each one of those will bring changes to the capacity of the road. So, all this number winging that we're going to start doing, once the TMP comes, we're going to have to wing it again and start changing all these numbers that we're trying, as non-transportation engineers, to be figuring out. So, to me, it makes a lot more sense, what they've been saying, is wait till we get the TMP, see how this model is working of level of services, utilize this analysis, and then we can put it in the comprehensive plan next year, the following year, whenever we think it's suitable and it suits. Remember that, as we've heard here, not only is it an imprecise measure, because it's generalized, and we're trying to do here with the HCM. I like Victor's word from the last time, I thought you called it a blunt instrument, because you're forcing our city to go to extreme measures. And we've talked about Sahali here. Two years ago, and we can ask Ben or Lyman this, or whoever's left from the survivors, the staff from back then, they were going to do a design for expanded lanes on Sahali Way, and they got a call from the Sahali Homeowners Association, they were going to bring in 300 people into the room, and they reversed the entire decision, was told of the council, said, didn't happen, we're starting all over again. So, when you start looking at taking out trees and expanding that road, there are a lot of people who are very vehemently opposed to the road that we've just been using as a model to that extreme, and I'm sure we can get a number of staff to come back and relive that decision that the council took, as you may recall, Hornish and Mauchow, from that time. But if not, ask the staff, they'll go back and say, why did that Vance decision that was pushed through get completely eradicated? Was because we were told 300 people were coming in to charge the council. Unfortunately, yourself and myself had opposed that, that decision at that point. The other thing I'm concerned about, about the blunt instrument, is the potential for litigations that may occur if you're using a blunt instrument. And I'd like to know from staff, Steve and Cheryl, if there is a risk, if a project is then designed, and we have a blunt instrument, is there, or have you seen precedence for that taking place, where people will challenge the city?
So, one of the things we mentioned a couple times today, and even just, just to Victor sitting here, is the fact that, yes, we have a, we have a prescription, so to speak, right, for how we're going to mitigate and manage our system. Let's say we fail a concurrency cert, and it's, okay, well, we're going to go back and do our homework and see where the improvement needs to be, and, you know, we have general capital projects listed out, right? They're not specific, because that's the precision part of it. And they can say, well, we're going to, we'd like to mitigate that, and here's our proposal. And it's, well, we don't, I don't know how we get to allowing that flexibility, when, like, the HCM is our tool, well, maybe it would be sufficient to have a turn lane added in some direction or another, but it doesn't get a credit, right? But then the math's going to show, hey, hearings examiner, here's what we're mitigating, here's their numbers, here's my professional traffic operations engineer's presentation to the city, you know, we can certainly, I'm correct if I'm wrong, we can go to a hearing with a, with a disagreement with a applicant, right? And that's, hearings examiner says, oh, staff doesn't recommend passage, here's why, and then they come in with their, their approach and said, hey, here's what we've got, and then, you know, independent third party looks at it. So, I just want to make sure, my concern is, how do we manage through what we do? That's all.
Exactly.
Because we'll have to have some sort of flexibility.
For that reason, I go back, and I think that staff recommendation makes a lot of sense to me, that we all do the analysis, include it in our analysis. I think Councilmember Stewart said, have it twice a year brought to us, but especially after the TMP, the whole game starts over again, and then let's see how this is working for us, and we can then move forward more methodically, rather than winging it and putting the city at risk as far as cost.
Okay. I haven't had an opportunity to talk yet, so I'm going to jump here, in here and ask a couple of questions. First, Victor, when you were talking, you mentioned two-way, two-way turn lane, right? So, but the Highway Capacity Manual, which is what I was talking about last week, doesn't allow any of that flexibility. And I think the deputy mayor asked the question that I had as well, which is, you know, is there the possibility of having that hybrid, so that it is not such a blunt instrument that says, sorry, if you'd like to build your development, you must add another lane on Sahali, right?
Right.
I think there is value in a left-hand turn lane. It does give the road capacity, and how, how can we do that? So, you know, I, I think it's hard to argue against the fact that a left-hand turn lane gives you capacity. If you're moving cars that are trying to turn left out of the through lane, more cars can get through. So, how do we do that? If there's, you know, we've already decided Highway Capacity Manual as a council, we're moving forward with that, unless somebody else wants to reconsider that. But how can we roll over some of those elements from the F dot that truly do give capacity to a roadway, so that it is not such a blunt instrument, so that when someone comes in with a development application, that we do have a menu that says, you can add a left turn lane in, or a right turn pocket, or something like that?
So, that's, that's where you get, you start using the word "and." So, we're going to use the Highway Capacity Manual, and we're going to give credit for a two-way left turn lane in this way. And I would even say, you give credit for two-way left turn lanes, you give credit for what we call access management. If you put a median barrier down, even if it's three feet wide, that no one can make a left turn across, you've done essentially the same thing. There are no left turn delays, they might have to go up the block and make a U-turn and come back, and you may or may not want that. Or, as you look at individual areas, if there's a wetland on each side of the road, you, you have the capacity of a two-way left turn lane or a barrier without either one, because it's impossible to make a left turn. So, in areas where it's physically impossible to make a left turn, you give them the credit for that movement, or that, that capacity. So, so there could be a couple ands that you add in, too. That's, and that's, you know, circling way back, that's where sort of T8 came from.
I was going to call it T.
It's T9.
I get it.
T8R. T8 two-point, T8.2.
But the difference with T8, to be crystal clear, is that my contention with T8 was the non-motorized capacity granted. So, down on East Lake Smamish Parkway, 50% of the available vehicular capacity was where cars couldn't drive, like a sidewalk or the trail. This is actually where a car can drive in a left-hand turn lane. So, that is true capacity, in my opinion, and I think would be wise to be tethered somehow to the Highway Capacity Manual. And I think somebody said that this is the Highway Capacity Manual, I can't remember what the word was that, that you used, I think, to describe it, but it just, it's just, it is cut and dry, there's no interpretation there at all. And I think I heard some of my council members last week stating that they wanted, you know, it to be for Smamish, right? So, we didn't want to use F dot, because that's for Florida. Well, the reality is, is that the cut and dry nature of the Highway Capacity Manual, without any interpretation, is that you got to add a lane. And I think, you know, I would like to be able to see the prescriptive nature of a left turn lane as being part of that. So, because then, you know, I'm, I'm with you, I remember that well. I was not on the council when the decision was made, but I was campaigning for office at that time, and I remember hearing from the people that they were screaming bloody murder over Sahali in five and three lanes, and.
You were on the second one, you're not on the first one.
So, yeah. So, anyway, but I think, you know, there's, there's things to be had, and I don't know if there's a way to, to get that, and I don't care if you call it Table T8.2, or whatever you want to call it, but I think.
R. You said R.
Anyway, I have a few more things in here, too. I wanted to get an understanding from staff. So, East Lake Smamish Parkway originally pulled out for, when we were doing level of service intersections, and then originally, we had looked at adding in the Parkway and 244th, and that's when the motion was made to exclude looking at the Parkway. But I want to get an understanding of what staff's interpretation of, is that the entire Parkway, or is that just the north segment? And the reason I bring that up is, if you look at the V over C ratios for the central and the southern section, I think we would, I'm not sure if we want to categorize where we're going with that, because the north end is where the problems are, and the VC ratios are exceedingly high. They are not, on a corridor level, are not over 1.0. So, I'm, I'm trying to understand what staff's interpretation of, we don't want to look at the Parkway is. Is it the north end, or is it the entire thing?
I mean, was it council you wanted to?
Yes, but I want to understand what staff's understanding of what council direction was, because I think my recollection was, we don't want to look at the Parkway, which would be looking at three different cor, like, the entire thing, which would include the central corridor and the southern corridor, neither of which have VC ratios for the corridor over 1.0. There's only one segment in there that's close.
It was my understanding that it was the entire Parkway, because at some point, one of the council members I don't remember specifically said 1 to 8 is excluded.
Okay. All right.
Intersections would get covered under the other roadways that are intersecting, and that's where the safety issues are, it isn't an issue on the Parkway per se. And if you use HCM, you know, the VC are fairly low relative to everything else, so I wouldn't really think there's an issue there, but yes.
There's not.
Where all of our major roads connect, from the west coming down, or from the east, you know, as they hit the Parkway, that's where, there's intersection improvements identified now with our other approach.
No, yeah, I understand that, I just wanted to understand, because as I looked at those VC ratios, they're not significant, and so, anyway, okay. Okay, I think those were my comments, so, okay. Councilmember Ritchie, I think you were, oh, wait, no, Councilmember Ross has not spoken yet.
Thank you.
Chris, if you'll be in the queue, do you?
Yes, will do.
Okay, first of all, I do like the ands, the motorized capacity components we consider to be part of our final HCM proposal. We all talked about accuracy and precision, and what keeps coming to my mind, and please correct me if I'm thinking this through incorrectly, but we can update and recalibrate our V over C ratios each annually, so therefore, we can set, make some reasonable decisions now on what those ratios are, put into our comp plan, and. Okay, clarify that for me, please.
We made, we made a, we made a reference in the comp plan to the V over C ratio, but the intent was to adopt the VC ratio.
Got it.
As an interim development regulation.
Okay, so, we'll do an interim regulation, development regulation update. We could do that at any time, we can do it twice in the next several months. Right. So, we decoupled it from the comp plan, so it's external from the comp plan. So, we have flexibility built into the system, and therefore, I'd like us to see if we can reach some conclusion on a VOC, and maybe consider, and I really like the ands, and move forward. And then, we can then, once we adopt that, work through the TMP, and that would help us recalibrate if.
Before you repeat that last part of the TMP?
Then, once we've established, in our concurrency process, our new V over C standards and ratios, and possibly an end table to give credit for those motorized capacity enhancements, then we complete that, then we can move forward with the TMP, and through that, we may discover more elements will help us in our traffic in Smamish, and then adjust accordingly as necessary.
I really appreciate what Councilmember Ross just said, I think that's a good idea. I think that's the direction we should go. If we're going to go this way, but I would like to, just for a moment of clarification, if, just plug into what Victor just said here. So, you got me, Victor? Question for you.
He's on it.
God bless you and your skill set, man, it's not mine, I, you know, that's cool. All right, so anyway, I, my question to you is from a, and Kendra, just from a traffic, just an open-ended question, and I don't know, I'm trying to seek some information here, and maybe it'd be informative to my fellow council members, maybe not, I don't know, but I'm, this is informative to me. If we are tonight going to, not tonight, but on November 6th, but hopefully soon, you know, within the next two weeks, coming to our next meeting, come out of tonight with some sort of proposal, my concern is, if we tie in a straight V over C calculation into our concurrency model, not a blended one, because that sounds like a lot of work, or a significant amount of work, or not a next-two-week amount of kind of work, are we not putting ourselves in, at least in the short term, at the risk of having to make some bad or forced decisions, like the seven lanes on Sahali? I'm sorry, 228th, not Sahali. But, whatever, Sahali 228th, whatever. Are we then forcing ourselves into having to do that because of a rush to plug in a model that may not be accurate, blended, for what we're trying to do, for our specific geography, for our specific roads, for what we're trying to do? And then, from there, my question is, should we use the V over C as an advisory for now, as we move towards a V over C that is blended, as Councilmember Ross was just saying, and then we're getting the information from that and figuring out what that blended model would look like? Because we want a blended, a Smamish concurrency model, not Florida, not HCM, a Smamish-specific concurrency model that is specific to our geography, our roads, our network, everything we have going on. What I want to be able to do is get the information that's best, the information that allows us to make informed decisions, and plugging those things in right now, those broad brush, heavy-handed things, does that not box us in to making some decisions that we may not want to make right now? And if I can, just to finish off, then I'll turn off here. If we're going to create a blended model, if that's where we're going, and I'm, I'm digging what Chris, Councilmember Ross is saying, I like the idea of a blended model, I like it, it seems like a reasonable compromise, I'm all about trying to find compromise, I want to support this idea. If we can find a blended model, can you give me an idea as to how long that kind of thing would take? Could we get some choice within limits within X period of time? And then, would we still have that capacity to tweak it within the interim regs, as Councilmember Ross and Mayor Mauchow were discussing, as we go along, and then use that as our target for the TMP? I don't want to support something that is not, it's a square peg in a round hole, right? And that's kind of what we're looking at. We, we've met our, and I'm not getting away from our goal, we said we would do this, we said, we, we had the vote on in July, we confirmed it in September. I'm in, I'm part of the council, I want to support what we're doing as a whole, whether or not I support it wholeheartedly or not, I'm, I want to help us get there, I want to support this. How do we get there? How long does that take? And what do you need from us, either tonight or the next few weeks, or months, or whatever that is, to get there? And is it something we could do in the next two weeks, or are we talking months plural? I, thank you, I appreciate any insight you can give me.
I'd like to see something, I really liked Victor's idea of picking a fairly high VC based on HCM that isn't boxing us into anything right now. I think there's been intent by council, hey, we like the Highway Capacity Manual, all things being equal. Obviously, there's ways we could refine it. I could see setting a VC standard that's high enough that it's not fixing your hand in anything for right now, putting that in place as a placeholder, to show the intention that council wants to establish segment level or quarter level. I'm not answering that question for you right now, VC standards, put those in place in your development regulations. As we do the Transportation Master Plan, one of the products of the Transportation Master Plan could be Smamish-specific volume to capacity ratios. We'll say, I've talked to some of capacity ratios. We'll say, I've talked to some of our company-wide experts, we actually have put together VCs that are very tailored to communities. What, the reason why we haven't maybe gone down that route earlier was the strong intention that, at least I heard from this council, that you want something that's well documented, put it in place lots of places. So, that is a, but I think we've, we've realized maybe the, the con side of having something that's very standardized and universal isn't where we want to go. But as a part of the TMP, as we figure out for all your roads in Samamish, well, what is the ultimate vision for this? Then we could set that volume to capacity, or your appropriate vehicle volume throughput, based on really what you want that ultimate capacity or function to be of that. And so, that VC placeholder table that we adopt in the near future would be then replaced, once we have a better kind of ultimate vision.
So, just to clarify, we could ask you guys, ask, we as council could direct you, potentially, to work together, work whatever, come up with some ideas. Hey, competitive ideas. I like capitalism. Let's compete and find the right one, right? Let's find the right idea that works. We put in a place, I'm just, this is, I'm hearing, I'm kind of trying to just take what your professional experience is and make it make sense in my head. Placeholder now that clarifies what a V over C will look like going forward, but large enough, high enough, non-demanding enough, that it doesn't trick, trip, large swath, seven lanes, holiday, I'm going to keep nailing you. I love that. That's just hysterical, right? That's a good visual, right? The trees, the roads, the houses. My question is, if we put that in now, I want to try to, is that 1.5? Is that 1.0? What does that look like? And then, as part of our, let's say, corridors, 1.5, could we then say, and on top of that, we ask there to be one, two, three proposals from our traffic engineers to come up with something by X date that would get plugged in to refine, as council member Ross said, to refine it? Is that something we could do, were we to miraculously come to an agreement on that? Is that something that could happen? A placeholder, then, something going forward?
Yeah, I think you can do that. I think, you know, we can do a, you know, very, kind of a back-of-the-napkin sort of reality check. You know, you have a population of 60,000 now. I think your growth projections is for 6,000 or 8,000 more, which is 10 or 15% more.
Five now.
Okay. All right, so whatever that percent is, 15%, so, so take the volumes you have now, add 10% to them in this chart. Make sure that the segments that you believe sincerely need improvements, like Issaquah Pine Lake and Issaquah Falls City and other things, sort of still fail with 10% more traffic, but things that don't need improvements don't fail with 10% more traffic. Then, because the only concern I would have is you don't want to lose the opportunity to require those big project improvements. That's really what concurrency is about. We have a big roadway that kind of all growth is responsible for, all growth needs to help pay for it. Your system should clearly identify those need to happen. Little spot improvements, I'm not kind of worried about at all. So, so that, you know, I'm not sure how many weeks, months away, you know, a 2035 model run is to get another set of numbers. It'll be roughly 10% higher than what you're looking at. But we could just multiply them all by 1.1 and kind of do a pre-test for what you're doing now, just to say.
That's blunt.
Okay, so, councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, if, if you guys don't mind, I really need to go. So, this is great. So, thank you, Victor, for your explanation earlier around, you know, how we can use this as, as an informative tool. It's still part of concurrency, so we're not violating any past decisions that we've made. Councilmember Ross, I think you're absolutely right. I think we need to figure out how we put the AND in, councilmember Ritchie as well. And I think Kendra partially stole my thunder, because I think what I'm hearing is, we can all come to an agreement, or we can come to a compromise, that we can all live with, which is, we will enact a V over C. We will set it to be something that is informative, but not...
No.
Well, no, that is, that does not tie our hands to making good decisions, right? We want to still be able to make reasonable decisions. And we can use, we can develop those AND pieces on the HCM AND, as we develop the TMP, that that's part of what we do, is we look at coming up with something that takes the tried and true methodology, and we adjust it to be more specific and more appropriate and accurate for Samamish. So, I just want to throw out that, really rough, so people can think about these numbers, sleep on them for a couple of weeks, and we can come back and potentially vote, that I think we should be looking at corridors and segments. The Sahali, the north Sahali corridor could be a 1.25. Again, segments cannot fail by more than 25%. So, we put that stopgap in. We don't allow one segment to fail miserably, but the corridor still passes. So, we put that stopgap in. All the other corridors would be set at 1.15. And again, segments can still not fail by more than 25%. And again, not, so we don't go backwards, I think we confirm that we excluded the entirety of Eastlake-Samamish Parkway. So, I feel like that takes into consideration everything that Victor said, everything that even the mayor said about, you know, we don't want to use the blunt instrument. We want to be able to do something blended. But we've already made that decision. We don't want to go back. Let's keep moving forward. Let's get this in place quickly, so that, again, we can get back to the TMP, and we can start developing what those ANDs, AND, not E N D, the ANDs are. So, I just want to throw that out there for people to sleep on. And I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to run. So, thank you.
Who is now officially an adult, so.
Yes, yes, he can.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, guys.
I'm not sure who's next. I think councilmember Valdroma.
I will cede to councilmember Moran, because she seems to be of a like mindset on the last offer.
Did he say anything?
Oh, that's right. Councilmember Hornish, sorry. I do have my phone, so you can text when you want to be in the queue here.
Yeah, okay. Tried that earlier and I didn't get anything. So, I have a question to your just addressed. I, I actually don't like the blended methodology, because I'm going to comment earlier, I think it's mixing apples and oranges a little bit. FDOT backs away from the max capacity of the HCM, and then gives you credit for those things. If we now start adding credit to those things that the FDOT gives you credit for with a lower starting number, we're then exceeding an HCM that may not be, an HCM capacity that loses some defensibility, as addressed earlier. So, just keep that in mind. Number two, I want to remind everybody, concurrency is not a traffic tool. It is a development test. Can we accept more development? The concept, or the, some of the statements that said, you know, if we need to widen roads for one hour or whatever, we never have to widen the road. We can, Chris, you said it very well. We can change the V over C. It's not in stone. And oh, guess what? We also have the tool to revisit the zoning under the GMA. It doesn't mean that we have to always widen the road if, if the cost benefit's not there. I like the corridor, because I think it does smooth the segment failures. If you just use the pure segment, and if it's, if it fails whatever number we choose for a V over C, then it has to be fixed. But the corridor kind of takes that average and kind of smoothes it as an engineering concept. So, I think we, when we get to this decision tree, I think we should first decide whether or not to use corridor, which I'm a big proponent of, because of the smoothing effect, and then figure out the V over C, and whether or not we want to V over C for a corridor, if we choose that. And then, to Pan's concept of having a segment failure as a what-if or a worst case, too. So, I kind of like that concept. So, what I would like to think about, and, and a little bit different than what AM had proposed, to be very clear, no Eastlake-Samamish Parkway per our prior decision. If you choose a corridor of 1.0 and no greater than 1.25 in any segment, using the current V over Cs that we had in our table from last meeting, you have a failure on the corridor for Issaquah Pine Lake. You have a corridor failure for Sahali. And you have a segment failure for Issaquah Falls City. Issaquah Pine Lake, Sahali, Issaquah Falls City. Guess what? All three of those have been on our TMP, and they will be fixed with, or TIP, sorry, TIP for the next six years, which then allows development to continue, because we have a fix for the next six years, within the next six years. So, that gets us out from underneath of not having any more development. And if it doesn't, if the cost benefit's not there, we revisit those numbers. But I think the 1.0 and a 1.25 on a segment, 1.0 for corridor, 1.25 on a segment, would work for now to move forward. Then, we can get to what everybody's been saying to the TMP, and actually focus on the traffic, and try to do things with the schools, turning lanes, and everything else, and revisit the V over C, I think, as Kendra had mentioned before. So, I kind of like that idea, if we can move forward.
Okay. Now, I'm confused as to who was next again. Deputy Mayor Moran?
I'm thinking about Tom's numbers.
You had asked for an explanation. I said I was going to say the same thing. Do you want me to repeat?
Oh, no, that's okay.
Okay, you got it, okay.
I had a question for Victor, and it was on numbers. So, Victor, do you have, when, when you had mentioned that the 1.25 for corridors and segments, you know, not fail by anything more than 25%, had you run any long-term numbers or anything on that?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so, how long do you think, if we come up with, with an idea tonight, how long do you think it would take to run numbers on it, and then 2035 numbers?
Well, the, the model is managed by David Evans, who's a subcontractor, actually contract with Fair and Peers and with the city, I think. So, I think, I know they've constructed it. I don't know how much they've tested it. So, and it's probably a function of their workload and schedule, but it's, you know, it's not like someone has to build a 2035 model. It's out there. It just has to be applied. But it's a matter of scoping that work, getting it contracted, having them do it, and bringing it back. So...
The swag reported magnitude.
So, we're saying they have 2035 numbers?
Yeah.
And is this based, sorry, can I clarify, 2035 numbers based on V over C? Because we still don't even have for lovers, level of service of intersections.
Well, you'd be able to do both. So, you'd run the 2035 model to provide a traffic forecast that would provide intersection LOS and segment LOS. Same model.
My primary concern with the 2035, I mean, they, they'd begun building a 2035 model as a part of the 2017 comp plan update. So, yes, there are technical files that exist. One major change, which they haven't implemented, is the AM peak hour model. That's something as a part of the 2035 analysis. There was only a PM peak hour future file. So, not only do we need to go back and reconfirm that they have the right land use assumptions and roadway network, but also that they have an AM peak hour version, which does take some time. So, I think, and I guess I'm kind of curious, are you thinking to inform our initial set of volume to capacity ratios to have that? Or are you thinking maybe just to use kind of more pipeline analysis for that initial set of VCs?
Well, I don't know, probably just pipeline ones for the original ones.
Okay.
Don't need to narrow it quite down.
That's much more doable, from that perspective. I don't have a timeline. I don't know citywide if we'd be comfortable coming on November 6th, because that would have, you know, essentially by next week, we'd have to have all those numbers refined, scrubbed. But I think, you know, in a period not too long after there, we could have something to that effect. And again, it's just, it's an interest in bringing back to this council, numbers that we feel relatively confident about.
Councilmember Valdroma.
I'm glad I let Karen go forward, because I have similar concerns and considerations. Councilmember Stewart had followed similar to council member or deputy mayor Moran, as far as needing numbers, getting it back. I think they're paper exercises. And if I'm not mistaken, I thought that the AM was only a 5% anyways change from the PM, is what I had understood. So, for paper exercises, if we don't have it, it gives us that rough order of magnitude to work. I thought we had a consensus, actually, several consenses. First, we were going to level of service of intersections. Then, we were talking about having this to inform us and having a placeholder V over C. So, I'm opposed to a 1.0 now if we're doing placeholders. It goes against the whole idea of the placeholders that we then start to work against. So, I would rather have a higher number that we then start to refine, and again, inform with the TMP as we go through it and adjust, as we go and recreate the T8 now R table that's going to be our hybrid for Samamish. Ironically, you know, I take my hat off to council, deputy mayor Moran, because in the end, we're going back to the T8 of sorts, and back again to the segment averaging. And she did say many times, let's just go back to the old way of doing things and save ourselves millions. And I take my hat off to her, as she's been shown to be correct in this whole exercise as we're going forward here, and want that to be recognized here. But we're only looking at a number of segments that were limited in our last council meeting. I think council member Hornish had mentioned North Sahali, Issaquah Falls City Road, Issaquah Pine Lake Road. And I think you mentioned also Dothee Hill Road were the ones that we were going to be looking at. And, and the rest, we're not going to have this. But let's do placeholders. Let's not try to figure something out. Let staff come back to us, give us what they consider to be an appropriate placeholder number. We can discuss it. And then, as council member Ross had said, start to refine, go through those iterations, not just now, but in the future. And I think in that, we're, we're getting a consensus here of the council all being behind that. Thank you.
May I ask a clarifying question? So, we've been, we've been talking, there's been a few things I've heard. I've heard an ultimate intent of maybe having this AND approach, where it's HCM with some of those adjustments that are allowed in Florida that we think make a lot of sense. For this initial placeholder, my understanding is using Highway Capacity Manual, not any of those other adjustments. And that would be something that would be baked in the eventual, okay, at least one. Thanks.
Councilmember Ross.
I like what councilmember Hornish talked about. I'd rather not wait for more data. I think Victor said use a 10%, whatever bump. But councilmember Hornish mentioned 1.0, and those that fail on the segments were already in the TIP. So, I think that's a reasonable approach to start with. I'd rather not raise the ceiling too, too high, because then we don't have any V over C in place. So, I don't want to just put a placeholder and has no action, and is not a development test. So, I think it's important for us to get something done before, make a decision for November 6. And I think I do not recommend more data, because I think the data is going to get, inform us one way or another, but not materially different than a decision we make on November 6. I'd like us to be more methodical, in concert with the TMP, to reassess forward-looking data. And you have an opportunity to recalibrate the, the V over Cs in the future. So, I really think we need to make a decision for November 6. No further studies. Make a reasonable assessment. And if it's one and 1.25 on the segments, or please, let's have a discussion of why that's too low, if that's what I'm hearing. Let's have a reasonably, but have some tight in, tightness in it. So, it does have the effect of being a development test. So, otherwise, it has no meaning if you raise it too high.
Okay, I'm going to go. So, I have a couple of questions. First, I think the idea of doing the 1.0 everywhere, and I think it was 25% overage on a segment, is not a bad idea, but there's one caveat. So, as I mentioned earlier, all of those projects are covered on our TIP currently. My only concern is Sahali specifically, if you prescribe the HCM without the AND element. Tom, I know you are not in favor of having the AND for, like, left-turn pockets. But if you put a 1.0 V over C ratio on Sahali, it is on our TIP, but it is on our TIP as a three-lane, says widen to three lanes. And is the assumption there that, by adding that extra lane, is that left-turn lane, are you going to get credit? Or do you get the full credit for the lane? I think that's my question, to understand whether or not the 1.0 would actually work in this scenario. Because in, in that, I believe that it actually works to have a 1.0 V over C, with everything sitting on the tip, because you're giving capacity for all those projects with lanes. What is that third lane? Really? Because we do it on Issaquah Pine Lake Road, too.
It was a, it was a share median slash turn. And again, the issue that last time, when we went to that, this project coming off the project list, right? That was, the capacity maybe was overstated relative to the safety, right? Safety priority, capacity came with minimum improvements relative to...
Right.
...V over C, but it would likely get us to a V over C of under one.
Okay.
But again, that would be modeling and some assumptions. But yes, safety, corridor enhancements, median and turn lanes where necessary, as well as intersection improvements with signalization and ITS connectivity.
But I think my question is, so, that three-lane project, will that give us...
If you don't give credit for a two-way left-turn lane, then you would improve it and not increase its capacity, according to your table.
Which is why the AND is so critical.
Yeah, so you'd still have a failure.
Okay, so I'm supportive of doing the 1.0 V over C ratio with the 25% overage per segment. But I think that comment is caveated that we do give ourselves some capacity for left-hand turn lanes or right-turn pockets, those that get vehicles out of the through lane, so that we can get more throughput.
There's a lot of research on that. It's more Federal Highways Transportation Research Board. You won't find it exactly in the Highway Capacity Manual, but you know, there are numbers that say generally 15 to 20% increase in through capacity. I could bring you some of those studies, and if you're comfortable that that's documented, you could, that's a pretty simple add onto the HCM to say the two-way left turn lane adds 15%. And if that gets us over the hump, so that Soliway passes with three lanes, that would be great.
So you said you were looking up the two-way turn lanes for the Highway Capacity Manual. I mean, you're talking percentages, but is there a defined number that they give you? I mean, FDOT had it. I'm just curious if there's one out there?
Well, FDOT's was a percentage, too, of the roadway capacity.
All right.
So fairly, and a little lower than that, actually.
Okay.
I can, yeah, it's pretty, it's a wide range, but I can find you some specific
Okay.
vetted research that we can base a hand on.
Okay, so to, you know, the point I brought up earlier, and I think has been echoed several times across the table, and I think actually Karen brought it up originally, and I had the same notes, which is that hybrid model, if we do that in conjunction with a 1.0 V over C, things work, because things are living on our TIP. There isn't a single project on here that is not covered by
You just want to make sure what you're measuring is reflected in the projects.
Right.
That the project's providing something that adds capacity.
We have flexibility. We are not talking about comp plan changes anymore. We can remedy it whenever we feel like it, if we want to, right? So that we, you know, don't have to over prescribe and, you know, five-lane Sahali with this. We don't have to.
Right.
We were kind of having a little sidebar here, and I don't want to jump in front of the councilmember, but I want to make sure that, just to share some, we did run some preliminary numbers on Issaquah Pine Lake Road this week, just because we anticipated some discussion, and we knew that was one of our more challenging corridors in the city. What I would share is with straight HCM numbers, when you look at how much growth you anticipate over the next six years versus what the Phase 1 project of Issaquah Pine Lake Road is, we look at straight HCM numbers, we're still a little over a 1.0 VC for the corridor. However, when you start pulling in the Phase 2 project, which I know is outside of your
This is, just to clarify, sorry, this is out in the future. Is that right?
It's out in the future. This is 2024.
Okay.
But, you know, when we start looking at that Phase 2 project, for example, you've got lots of capacity. But I do like, you know, the straight HCM doesn't provide kind of that turn lane adjustment. So I think potentially an option here, if we want to move forward, would be to allow for that turn lane adjustment that Victor's mentioning, which we have some documentation for. It's 15 or 20% that we add to that. I think that paired with the HCM, we probably would not be shoehorning ourselves or forcing cities' hand into projects that we're not sure about. Now, it might be a year from now, we've done the TMP. We want to add more capacity. Great. But we'll have the time and headspace to think through that, think through the fiscal ramifications, et cetera.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Moran?
My only concern with using a 1.0 is that, not that it's okay, because I'm sure it's okay now. It's probably okay for the next five years. Is it okay in, you know, is it okay in 20 years?
Well, I think that's what she was just looking at.
We were looking out only
We were only looking out actually to 2024. But I think what I'm hearing direction from the council on is that, and I think, you know, is let's just look out to the pipeline for this initial, you know, placeholder VC, and that this will be revisited at the end of the TMP to then get you to your final, what you feel really strongly
But I want to look at, no, I actually want to see past that, because our comp plan calls for us to look past that.
Exactly.
So just as an aside, when we had this discussion, sitting right here in this U-shaped
Can she finish and then you interject? Karen, finish up. I want to hear your thoughts first.
Well, I just want to see the numbers, just because I want to know what that is in 2035. Because if that means in 2035, we're looking at a train wreck, I'd like to know that. Because that may change what we're thinking about for a number. Or it may change what my thought process is today. I mean, to me, it might change what I would use for a number. It might change it to a 1.15. I would just like to, I'd like to know what that is.
I wholeheartedly agree with you. I think what I was, what I was gonna say is, we were sitting here on April 30th, having this conversation, and we weren't allowed to do anything. We weren't given any of the numbers for 2035 for level of service at intersections, because we were told it wasn't relative to the emergency changes on the comp plan. So we didn't even know what level of service at intersections looks like for 2035, which I think is also a little scary. So, yeah. Okay. Councilmember Valderrama?
Mayor, if I could answer a little bit, that's a big piece of the information that you don't have, is what we would develop as part of the TMP.
Exactly.
We might recommend adding more connections between roads, which would really shift how people travel around. I mean, we gave you an example with Pine Lake Middle School. So, you know, while we can certainly generate some numbers for 2035, but it is in the vacuum of not having information about what kinds of things can we do on the transit side? What kinds of things can we do for more connections, both within the city and with our neighboring cities, that will drastically, it probably will drastically affect not only the capacities of the road, but where people travel, when they travel, and how they get from point A to point B. So that's why we have been encouraging the council to wrap this up and let us get to the TMP, so we can give you more information and inform you better on what your choices might be out to 2035.
But our comp plan calls for it. So I'm, our comp plan calls for those numbers to be updated. So I'm really disappointed they're not gonna be in there. I'm surprised they're not gonna be in there, I guess, because from the standpoint that I guess I, I knew we didn't have them in April, but I thought they were gonna be in there by the end of the year. So the comp plan calls for them to be in there. I think they should be in there to 2035. I'm a little shocked they're not gonna be in there. I think waiting for the comp, or waiting for the TMP, I don't believe, having them in the TMP is just great for me, but I think that's secondary.
So we do have numbers out to 2035 in the comp plan. It's just under the old, the old system.
How do you figure out what the mitigation fees are?
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. You still have the floor. Go ahead.
She's back.
Sorry. Okay, so this just is another question off of that, then. So how do you figure out mitigation fees? If you don't know off your new level of service to 2035, then how are you figuring mitigation fees?
Well, I can, I can start to answer that, just in terms of how, and I'm assuming we're talking about impact fees?
Yes.
Okay. So for an impact fee, typically, the typical process is you'll start with a project list that the city has on the books. So you have a list of projects in your comprehensive plan for transportation, looking out 20 years. Some of those will be updated as part of the TMP, because the TMP is gonna inform the update of the comp plan. But you've got a list right now. In terms of how you structure an impact fee program, what you do is you take that list, you figure out which of these projects are eligible for inclusion in a mitigation fee or an impact fee, which are not. Generally, projects have to provide capacity for growth, so they need to be able to carry more trips. So a project like a pothole repair or a street overlay, probably not gonna be eligible. Whereas a project like a roadway widening, a new signal, those sorts of things, we can nod our head and say that provides capacity. So those will be included in your impact fee. The next steps that you take, one, you've asked about level of service in 2035. Actually, you don't need that for an impact fee. It's good for project definition. And as a part of the TMP, we're absolutely gonna be looking out to 2035 modeling, seeing what capital you need. But from the perspective of actually an impact fee, the only level of service information you need is what's on the ground and what's happening today.
But if we're using old information, then what's?
You do in your comp plan have the most up-to-date level of service information for intersections. We've reported on 2016, which is what we consider to be our, you know, kind of current condition. And those are being used to determine what are the deficiencies that you have on the ground today. We even have the pipeline information to say by 2024, what are our deficiencies. So as a mitigation fee, and what state law says is you can't charge development to fix problems that are on the ground today. So actually, 2035 intersection operations, while it's a really good question, and it's something that we want to help build that future project list, from the perspective of an impact fee, it's actually not critical. Then the next piece of the impact fee is understanding of those facilities that you're building as part of a roadway segment or an intersection. It's doing some modeling to understand who's using that. How much of the users for that are related to development within City of Sammamish versus how much is through trips coming from Issaquah to Redmond. And so there are tools and techniques your existing city model provides the data you need for that. And then, literally, it's summing up, you know, kind of using all those calculations, backing out pieces, taking the total eligible costs, and then dividing that by the growth in trips you expect over the next 20 years. And I think that's another place where you're like, well, don't I have that? We, as a city, actually do know what your current growth target is in terms of the new households, in terms of the new, you know, commercial square footage that's coming in. So that can be used to derive a trip growth number. And so then the impact fee is really based on that growth per, or the eligible cost spread over those growth in trips.
But if we have these new failures, and we found new failures, and so we have these new fixes that we're fixing because of these new failures, and this is going to all go into upgrades into the system, then this seems like lost money to me if we don't upgrade, put that into the updated information at the end of the year. I mean, it may not be much, but it is still gonna be a loss of money that should be collected. I mean, am I wrong here? Have I got that wrong?
Well, I think all of this information is gonna be answered. It just, some of it's gonna come in at different times. I agree with you. It'd be nice if we knew all this information six months ago. Unfortunately, that's not where we are today. So I think we're working forward, and we're triaging, we're figuring out what are those critical pieces of data to move forward. Our intention is, I think, and Cheryl, as you've been structuring your impact fee, I'm not involved in the city's traffic impact fees, I think there's gonna be a two-look system. Develop the impact fee rate, update that in the near term. And then when the TMP is ultimately done, to make sure that you're funding as many of those eligible projects as possible, to revisit and see if there are projects that should be brought on.
We've got a lot of people that are gonna be coming in for permits in the next year. So there's gonna be a lot of lost money.
So not technically. You vest a regulation at time of completed application. You do not vest by state law to fees. So if they get two years down the road, and they're finally ready to pull a permit, and our fee changes, their response will pay the fee at the time. Fees do not vest, like land use. So you reminded me over here. I've been listening and I'm getting lost. And that is, that is a point. And we are where we are. But the good news is, we haven't seen anything that isn't necessarily not already on our list. So the numerators and the denominators may change a little, but they're not gonna shift a lot.
Anything else you want to speak up about, Victor?
I just whisper in his ear once in a while.
Wait, he has to wake me up? But yeah, so that is, that is part of the state law.
You've got a time cushion on that.
Done?
He's our designated driver. So, yeah, again, to some of the points that Deputy Mayor Moran had raised, we had come to consensus we were going to be looking at a placeholder that was not going to be tying us down here shortly. In the last meeting, I had heard 1.25, then I believe it was 1.15. Now we're talking 1.0. Placeholders, the other direction, guys. So I'm going back to what we had talked about, and to the point that Karen had raised, is we want to be careful. We're not gonna start tying our citizens down with things that we don't know that are happening now, or that we haven't analyzed. As we start to see the TMP and the others, that's gonna continue to provide us more information. And so while we have a placeholder number that's higher, it'll allow us to refine as we go forward without burdening our taxpayer. That's a fiduciary responsibility we also have here to go through and look at, as well as the environmental impacts that's gonna take place. So I go back to, I'm supportive of a placeholder in the sense that it was thrown out here to have a higher number. We work with it, and then we refine over time. And time doesn't necessarily mean that, some will start to change in six months when the TMP is done, or a year, or two years, as numbers change. Likewise, our whole concurrency model is going to be, by decision, being revisited over the years as we go forward. None of this is static. So let's just move with what we had said before of a placeholder. Let's gather more information to feed our refinement. But when we're talking about placeholders, let's not bring, start bringing those numbers down. It's supposed to be bringing the numbers up, in my mind, and what's been recommended here, Kendra's not even the other. So let's do what we said. Thanks.
So Larry and Steve, I'd like to ask you guys, what is most helpful now? Would it be easier if we just kind of did a round robin, went around the table, so you guys could hear corridors and V over C ratio? Would that be the most helpful? Or what is most helpful to get us to where we need to go for November 6?
Here's what I think I have heard from you, and then you can, and then there's one piece that I think you still need to decide. You've talked about, and I think there is a consensus, not unanimity, on HCM with some ANDs. And those ANDs, what I've heard you talk about is turning lanes, left-turning lanes, right-turn pockets, and maybe even no turns.
A median.
Yep. That, there was no parkway that you would choose a, well, I'll come back to that one. You'll use the TMP to inform, and then you will choose a V over C on corridor and on the segments. And that's where the disagreement may exist. So it would be good to kind of hear where everyone's at in regards to those numbers.
Were you saying informed before?
That's the TMP.
The TMP.
Wait.
TMP informing
Well, prosecutor.
The V over C, or, because that's not my understanding.
That's not, I said it the other way around.
VC first.
Let's make a decision on V over C, and then go through the TMP to inform us with more data, including 2035, to get us where we need to be.
I just put the other, because the piece that's still missing here is what is the V over C for both your corridor and on your segments. And I've heard 1.0 on corridors and 1.25 on segments. And I've heard that it needs to be higher.
Pam Stewart said 1.25 for Sahali with a 25% overage per segment, and all others 1.15 with a 25% overage. That was her. But she didn't, I don't know if she specified corridors.
I think she read, I think what Victor had suggested right at the beginning, which was the 1.25 corridor, segments cannot fail by more than 25%. And then the 1.15 everywhere else with segments can't fail by more than 25%.
Right, that's, yeah, that's what, okay. So maybe, is it helpful if we go around, or, okay, that way you'll know exactly where everybody's position is?
Least tonight.
Okay, so Jason, we'll start over on this side with you. Do you want to do corridors or segments? And you're, yes?
Thank you. Sorry for being my son of fancy football this week. Just happened tonight. Thank you. Secondarily, I'm for corridors, and I'm for 1.10.
1.10? Do you, okay, straight across, no percentage overage for, okay, done it. Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I am for 1.15 on corridors and segments not failing by more than 20%.
Can I ask a clarifying? Whenever anybody wants a separate number for segments, does that mean when any one segment fails, then we need to put that on the tip? Is that what that's, right, just that segment needs to be on the tip?
Which may likely expand into
Yes. Okay, so I am favorable for a 1.0. I am favorable to corridors and willing to go 1.25 on segments. But I do want to confirm with staff, and that's if we do the HCM with the ANDs in there, that that means that we're not failing anywhere, right? Because everything's, if there is a greater than 1.0 right now, it's on the tip, which means we are then in compliance. Fair?
Say it again.
So that's where we want to test how those two projects, and that's why I brought up Isco Pine Lake Road.
Mm-hmm.
The project that's currently on, still in format without the HCM.
Right, 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 but I, but I'm...
Above a 1.0, I think if we bring in that turn lane AND adjustment, we can probably get something that, that's in that vicinity, but again, we're going to need to run the numbers there.
Okay, okay, well, then that's...
And the same for Sahali.
Right, right, because the current tip project is a three lane.
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Ross?
Boy. Well, corridor, I like the bumper segment, whether it's a 15 to 20%. Sounds like we're all in the 1.0 to 1.15 so far on the corridor itself. The 1.1 fits in nicely with the current TIP. And I think as we get more informed and we see new volumes coming in with updated data, we have an opportunity to adjust that.
So 1.1?
Yeah.
Any bump for segments?
Let's, I, I would go, well, it's, it's a matter, it sounds like we're going to, we're splitting hairs on these, one, 1.1 to 1, to 1.1, so I'm not sure.
I think Pam had 1.25, didn't she?
Yeah.
She, we, we've got Pam's, hers is a little different.
I'd like to stay initially a 10% bump, so I, so maximum is 1.1, but I'm agreeable 1.0 to 1.1, I guess is the best way for me to stay.
Okay, okay, gotcha, all right.
To give some room for compromise.
Okay, got it. Okay. Councilmember Valderrama?
Can you repeat Pam's again with 1.2?
Sure. Pam's was 1, 1.25 versus Sahali with a 25% overage for any one segment.
Yep.
All others, 1.15, also with a 25% overage for any given segment.
I would support that.
Okay.
And corridors.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess we should probably, that 25% does add up pretty quick in that example, it's 1, 1.56 ratio, so if that's what you have in your mind, then that would be the bump on the segment. So even at 1.1, 20% gets you up to 1.32, so these, that percentage sounds like a little, but it does really bump it up quite a bit.
Councilmember Hornish?
Yeah, actually, Chris, I don't know if it's 25% over, or if it's a plus 25%. We need to clarify that for the segments when we actually get to adopting it, because I'm doing the math in my head too, and it's a little unclear. I like the corridors, number one, because it does smooth it, and I like a 1.0 and 1.25 for segment failure. And I am, I'm open to considering something extra for the turn lanes too, just to be clear, so to figure out what the capacity actually is.
Okay. Staff have what they need from...
No, I'm just looking, saying, why didn't we listen to you? Sorry?
Yeah, he did.
I just wrote, thanks.
Does, does staff have what they need from...
I got mine, yes.
Yeah, he's replicating Pam's.
Yeah, I'm the same as Pam's, corridors at 1.25 and 1.1.
We have that, I just want to point out that we, when it comes to corridors, we've got some different numbers here, so we're going to have to find some compromise in there somewhere.
Yeah, what's up with that, guys? Okay. Is it recessed?
No.
Do you guys have, hold on.
Okay, so what, I, I want to be really clear, what you're expecting us to bring back, are you...
I'll make it easy, I'll change mine to a 1.0, so you have four votes, so you can just call it a day.
Well...
Well, we can't do it here, we have to do it November 6.
Well, because she can bring, she can, they can bring something forward if...
So are you expecting us to bring the, some modifications to the HCM, some proposals? So that's one thing.
The 30-year peak, or, like Luke's see.
2035.
Our 2035 peak.
That's, because we don't have an AM.
No, I thought you were going to be able to bring us a little...
Can we get it for Christmas?
How about if we come back? We, we need to talk to our modeler.
I think we need to, okay.
Have an AM.
I'd like us to make a decision and move on, because we have been playing with data that's impurp, it's just, 2035, that can be worked concurrent with the TMP, and I'd really like to have a reasonable decision, I think we're doing reasonable plug-in for VOC, we have the intersection level of service, so I, I just don't want to drag this out much longer. I'd like to make a decision on November 6, on a process to move forward with, and we can refine it. It's, we plugged it into the, plugged it in and linked it to the comp plan, so we can make, be flexible and have changes down the road if we discover there's some reasons. But I think it's very reasonable to use what we've suggested, and I would support the one and 1.25, if that's a proposal. And I do, to the extent we can get any motorized capacity adds ANDs in there, let's do that as well.
Yeah, I think it would be good for us to see what that, what that looks like compared against what we have here. So I think this, this specific projects that I think would be questionable under current conditions, which is living on our TIP, and that 1.0 is Sahali, and then that Phase One of Isco Pine Lake Road, which is a three-lane segment instead of the five. I think we want to see what it looks like if we give capacity for left-hand turn lanes.
Can I jump in?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm Cheryl, I'm wondering if you can't do a calculation for V-oversee with a 1.0, 1.1, 1.25 for corridors, 25% overage on all the segments. This is, it's going to be a little bit of a complex spreadsheet, but you have that. And then you do a second same thing with the added capacities for the turn lanes with the hybrid model or whatever. Would that be a way, you'd have three column HCMs, I guess you'd have six for ANPM. And then you'd have three more with a higher capacity in the denominator because of the hybrid model. And then we can kind of see where we're at. And I, and I don't know if you can do one more parameter of now and six years out, or do we want to just look six years out? That's probably the best way of looking at it, wouldn't it?
They're having a pow-wow, hold on.
So Kendra, yeah, so Kendra's, Kendra's, so our modeler is out, we haven't, you know, he'll be back tomorrow, and he, we really need to talk to him. Kendra is suggesting that the 13th, if you wanted it for the 6th, we would have to have it done in a week, because we have to get the, you know, the material, the packet material done, and I, we're so close, I don't want to give you numbers that we don't have time to really vet them out and take a look at them.
Appreciate that.
Because otherwise, we're just going to crank them and give them to you, and, and we won't have had it, had a chance to really look at them.
Can you be clear, that, that's for the six-year projected growth, is that what you're giving the model?
Correct.
Okay.
The current, it's current and the pipeline.
Got it, okay, thanks.
And the 13th, a regular meeting?
What's on the 13th?
No, there'll be a study session, won't it?
Yeah.
So we can make it a special, we can make it a special meeting.
Can we make it special?
Which meeting is this, though?
If we're going to go to the 13th?
Do you make sure Victor joins us?
November 13th?
Is that a budget?
These, these meetings are all special, I assure you.
They're special way.
I like the way you said that.
And I think that we're awesome.
We can research the ANDs, but at this point, in my mind, we have three of these kickers, turn pocket, right, then you have a median or a barrier. I think we need to consider ITS too, just for the...
ITS.
Application of ITS to the system, because that does add 5 to 10%.
Because we're getting, ITS will be installed at 37th and Sahali, is that correct? That's one of them, and where...
It is on the program right now, to be designed to extend from 14th all the way to the North End, and then hopefully intertie with the county and the state.
What about, there's, there aren't any...
What? I don't know if he was talking about it.
What?
Repeat the question, which number?
I saw you writing something, were you, did you have an idea of getting, how to get Tom Lee's looking for?
Uh, no, I was writing someone, I was writing AND, a list of...
No, no, ITS on Isco Pine Lake Road, or we are...
We aren't, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't, can't, or couldn't.
And there's only one, there's only one light, though, that would be in that first...
Unless 32nd changes during the design process for Isco Pine Lake.
And later when the TIP...
But there's only one light at the Connor Jarvis, what is that, 42nd?
Yep, and then you hit Kohani, then you hit 46, then you hit 48.
Right, and those are in the five, those are in the five lane, I'm not worried about the five lane, I'm just thinking about the three lane segment.
No, but to Karen's point, later on, with the TMP, there may be more.
Hold on, I think we have two conversations going on, I missed what Karen said.
Three.
It's not one.
I do, I do want to make sure too, that we captured what Councilor Hornish was asking for, that we, we, those are the numbers we can put together, if we understand that.
By the 13th?
Right, I was also whispering with Kendra, so there are other, other capacity enhancements like signals and roundabouts, which the HCM does not recognize either. Do you want us to come back with a proposal that includes some options for those?
Yep. I think so.
I think that the simpler, I think the simpler approach that we've come up with, turn lanes, medians, of those is probably enough. ITS, we could talk about an adjustment, a typical factor, just, you know, we could look a little more deeply into it for a lot of communities, is, they'll say if there's ITS along this corridor, we're going to, although it's done usually on an intersection basis, we're going to recognize that delays are 10% lower, you can increase, you could bump your capacities by 10%, and that's, we'd need to find a factor for that. But I think certainly for the turn lanes, for a placeholder, if we can get there with just the turn lanes and the medians, that might be the, the first initial...
Correct, simplicity would help expedite this.
So, and we'll come back, so with 2016 and pipeline, and to Deputy Mayor Moran's thoughts, yes, 2035 is really important, and when we're developing that list, obviously we're going to have modeling numbers for those. In terms of developing something that's, that's immediately applicable to your development[1762.26]